The first item on our agenda is to go into executive session for procedure three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect, bargaining or litigation, position of the public body, the chair so declares. We'll be discussing the teacher's contract and the chair does declare. Before, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Before I go to the roll call, I want to point it out to everybody who's watching tonight. Education reform allows Mr. Nunes to participate in this because he's the town's representative under education reform for voting members for teachers' contracts. He's also, we extended that and had him as a member of the negotiating team. So I did want to bring that up. So I'll go with the roll call. Mr. Nunes, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Lambert, Mr. Gillis.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and we will return to executive session, a regular session, around seven o'clock. Thank you. I'm going to bring the meeting back into session. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for waiting patiently. We're going to make one quick change and I'm going to take one item out of order. Under the action items, I have the memorandum of agreement, teacher's contract.
Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the memorandum of agreement between the school committee and the Middleborough Education Association as presented to us this evening with the following change on Article six, section C point six, C point six, on a new language, subsection A. The first sentence should read, "The teacher shall, the teacher year shall be no more than 184 days." And the other item was under that same section where it says during the school year 2016-17, it should read after that, "The day before Thanksgiving" versus just Thanksgiving will be an early release day. So that was under item four, section six, C six, item E.
I would like to add again, as I did at the very beginning, Mr. Newt joins us because he's the town representative and he's allowed to vote under education reform for the contract. Mr. Nunes also served with myself and Brian as negotiating team and I really appreciate his insight and the things he did to help us. And I really appreciate the work Ryan put in for all his hard work in getting this done. Does any member of the committee have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I want to thank the work of everybody involved in the negotiations. It wasn't easy, but I move that there is an order for all parties involved.
I would personally like to thank the Middleborough Education Association for their working with us on this. Thank you in getting these and the future ones completed that we're still working on. But thank you very much for cooperative spirit and effort on this, which was great.
Brian, can I ask? You did just go over a couple of the high points so people at home would know what's going on.
We'll start with the highest, the high point is that the contract includes a 2% pay increase for all steps, 2% for the first year, second year, and third year. So it's 2%, 2%, and 2%, which most people would probably want to look at. The other item that really is a big change from this current contract is that there will be only six early release days included with professional development, early release days. There currently are 12 and that's an item that we heard a lot of throughout the last year and a half about so many of those early release days in our district. So we have our, out of the 184 days in the teacher contract, they have 180 hands-on teaching days and there's four full days of professional development that we also provide, three of which we have right at the beginning of the school year. And then we have the fourth, the fourth one this year, I believe, is going to be election day, November 8th, which is a Tuesday. So that is going to be the fourth full day of professional development. And then on top of that, we'll have the other six early release days throughout the year. So that's a big, that's a big change over the previous contract. I think that was really the two big items that there are other small things, but really didn't change a lot, didn't change a lot, so. And I want to thank the, the two committees have, they haven't ratified yet, but there's a change in the contribution that new employees will be paying towards their health insurance. They've gone from the old 80/20 split for all new reasons to 70/30, which is similar to every other contract in the entire town, including our school contracts and general government contracts. And thank you for that.
Frank, I'd offer you, if you wanted to say anything or make any comments. Excellent. I just wanted to make sure you're off. Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Seeing no one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. And Bob, I know you have to leave, but thank you very, very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Cutino, did you get those two changes? Okay, thank you.
Next item on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to comment on anything on tonight's agenda? Please, and I will apologize now for my voice or lack thereof. Hello, Megan, again. It was very nice to see you last.
I thought some was more set up for the, it was more for the state government level rather than town government level, so I definitely said that, I mean amendments to it, like personal amendments that are now written into this. I just wanted to present to this because there was a lot of scheduling issues amongst my friends for taking honors classes and I believe honors classes have a higher ranking on a college application than a gym class. And a lot of towns in the surrounding areas have a lower gym class requirement for graduation than our town. So I thought this would be more beneficial for the students, especially with the new AP programs being implemented into our high school. So I just wanted this to be kind of like a new way to present this, with this more officially.
Thank you very, very much. I know I had a conversation with Mr. Brannigan after we met last time. Mr. Brannigan showed me that he was going to discuss it and have a conversation with it. As you know, he does his, um, thank you, book of studies. And that would be a topic for discussion. So Megan, we thank you for bringing it and I will include this and send this to Mr. Brannigan to look at. I know it's been a topic of conversation in my household that you brought it up, so I appreciate it and thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions for me? Brian?
Thank you for bringing this up and I always suggest that we also send this over to our wellness committee. Because I understand the idea of decreasing physical education so you get more academics in, but I'd like the wellness committee to think about and take a look, maybe even make a recommendation because they may say, yeah, it is, but there is that, still that balance and I'd love to see what they have to say on it as well. Because I know myself, when I went to high school, I could have used a little more physical education, I think, but I understand what you're saying and when you're taking those high-powered classes, and I did the same thing, you need more time. There's never enough time. But I just think that we should send it over to wellness and committee and let them take a peek at it and maybe give us a comment.
The, it just lowers the requirement, students can still take the fourth gym class if they please. The minority, it's a minority of people that want, not, that do not have this space on their schedule. So it's still, majority of the school would still be having four years of gym class. It's just in case, it's just so it's more flexible. It's like a just-in-case precaution to make it a little bit easier for the guidance to schedule the classes.
Chair, either through you to either Mr. Lynch and Mr. Brannigan. What are the, what does the state require on physical education? I do know that it has changed over the years, the years I know being several years ago, but I don't know actually what it is. What are the requirements for?
At least that they, at least they have to have a unit of physical education each year. There's also a health required and there's a starting requirement as well.
What is their definition of unit? What's the state's definition of unit, do you know?
I think we've always done the one unit per year, which is the one quarter.
One quarter, one term?
I understand you also, and then through you, Mr. Chair, to Megan. Megan, you've mentioned other high schools that have looked at this and examined this. Is this something that you've, do you have any list of, do you know of any schools that have reduced the physical education requirement at their high schools or is this something that you're sort of breaking ground with?
Well, we thought arena high school's requirement is two semesters of gym and then one semester of a health. So there's essentially the equivalence of two years at our school.
Obviously something that we'd have to look at to see how they got around the law. If the law says one unit of study per year and they've reduced that now to three.
If a unit is a term and two semesters, twice, they're equal. So, I think, I think it's a good idea, but we need to go by what the state says that we have to do also. To me, that's number one and I could certainly detain this. Thank you.
This question for you. Only be allowed to be done by students taking advanced placement courses or all students have this option to bow out of the fourth year of gym?
Make it for everybody, but if the student, it's just to make it easier for the schedule. That's like the main purpose. But you just, you can't graduate without the four years of gym class, but let's say like you took, let's say AP Lang over your gym class, you can't graduate even though you took AP Lang and you have three years of gym class, you may have a 4.0 GPA, but you still can't graduate because of that. There's been some cases like around the country where people have not graduated because they don't have one gym class. Even though they may have a 4.0 GPA, they're already accepted into, into that school and have scholarships lined up, they still can't graduate. And that's a major issue if you want to go to college.
Mr. Chair? Is there an opportunity or have you looked at the possibility of students substituting extracurricular activities? For example, if somebody's on the basketball team, is there an allowance in the law or have you evaluated that where they could substitute that physical activity or that time for a requirement? So the students are not missing out on physical activity, which is so critical. If you look at the rates of obesity in this country, you think it's a third of the population is obese and it's rising in our young people and that brings about all kinds of cardio-metabolic issues. So I have real concerns about when we start to talk about eliminating physical activity because my thought is lots of kids today would rather be on a device than in a gym class and that might not be helping them if we don't keep a requirement that maybe would be helpful long-term or beneficial. So anyway, is there, is that something that's allowable in the law to substitute extracurricular activity for that requirement?
I actually have the law on me right now and it's Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 3. And it says that physical education shall be taught as a required subject in all grades for all students in the public schools for the purpose of promoting the physical well-being in students. And then what can be classified as a gym class or physical education class can be calistatics, gymnastics, or military drill. But it does not require like a certain amount. So a school could regulate as many years of gym classes they would like. And also it can, this is just kind of like my idea, I just set up this way because this is like a, it avoids loopholes. So an amendment could, I would definitely be open for that to add like an extracurricular because I know a lot of students, especially at our high school, are taking heavy load works, workloads and also are part of like the football team, baseball team, et cetera, or even just club sports outside of that. So that's definitely an amendment I'd be open to.
The states of Connecticut and Vermont at least used to allow, if you played a full year sport, you could opt out of gym class. Something you could look into.
We charge a user's fee for extracurricular activities and unfortunately, when you charge a user's fee, we're no longer providing the education free of cost. I'd be concerned that that, we could run into an issue with that. And I, when I was looking at Chapter 71, Section 3, I was reading that as well and it says all grades. It doesn't say we can, we can skip a grade or double up here and it doesn't say how much, which I agree. So it, you know, how much of a gym class could be taught, but every grade you're going to have to take as far as chapter, Mass General Law says, as the way I read it. And I got my, I got to hear from Division of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESE, actually brings you right to it because it's part of the graduation requirements. So they actually specifically refer to the, that law. American history and civics is one and physical education is the other. General law, one's chapter two, section two, one's section three. So it's still worth looking at. I mean, I agree would be, if a student's getting active elsewhere than, out in the field or somewhere running track, I think that, I can understand they're still getting their exercise. So I think I, I don't know, I, I'd love to see how the state legislature would handle this.
I would add, there is one issue though. Mr. Brannigan, you can tell if I'm wrong. Students choose their schedule before end of school year for next year. So for example, if for your final, if you skipped your final gym because you knew you were going to play baseball and got caught, you'd be scrambling to find a requirement. So I just bring that up. I understand. For example, I know the military academies make it a requirement that everybody have gym. The exception is if you play a club or varsity sport, you do not have to have gym that semester. But my only concern would be somebody who puts all their eggs in one basket and then for some reason get caught. You know, it'd be scrambling at the end and I think it would be problematic, not only for the student, but for guidance and Mr. Brannigan. So I just raise that as a concern. But Megan, thank you. This is not a topic that will drop and will continue to have it. Appreciate you bringing it up again and I appreciate you adding these things. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chair? I just want to thank you too for your engagement and for your courage for coming here and really taking a good, hard look at this. This is not easy. It's not easy to sit in front of a bunch of people in a room, but people behind microphones and really stand up for a cause that you believe in. So thank you for your courage. Appreciate it.
The next item on our agenda, which is very exciting, is recognition and I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the committee, members of the audience, I'm pleased to introduce some folks tonight to you and an interesting partnership that we're developing. Dr. Melanie Gates approached me not too long ago with a concept. We have a company called Sager Electronics that is here on Leona Drive up in the, off the rotary in the industrial complex and they're distributor, a major distributor of electronic supplies. And they had contacted Dr. Gates with a proposal to work cooperatively and collaboratively with our school district. And Dr. Gates, myself, Mr. Brannigan had the opportunity to meet with Debbie Chipman, who's local, whose son just graduated from Middleboro High School. She's the marketing operations support representatives and also Mary Ellen Stack, who I know from my life in Bridgewater, where she's the director of marketing communications. And they've brought along somebody with them that I have not met. Yeah, I met him outside in the, in the parking lot, Faris Aruri, who's the senior vice president of marketing. So I'm going to ask that Dr. Gates come down to the podium and talk a little bit about this new, exciting partnership, collaboration and, Dr. Gates?
Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome the guests to be down here with me because I think it's going to be more of a conversation than me expressing what had happened. So if we could welcome our guests down with, yes, we have another chair coming. So we'll just start with the introduction of our, our new colleagues and partners here.
Hi, I'm Debbie Chipman and I live in Middleboro. So this was really exciting to get this started with the town.
Hi, I'm Mary Ellen Stack. I'm the director of marketing communications for Sager Electronics and we're pleased to be here. We're excited that you were open to our ideas about working with your STEM program and your robotics, potential robotics program. So thank you for having us. Sorry, Faris.
That's okay. Here, I'll get a blue switch. Okay. So good evening. Thank you, Dr. Gates and Superintendent Lynch and Mr. Chair and Principal Brannigan and the rest of the school department, school committee. I'm Faris Aruri. I'm senior vice president at Sager Electronics here. We're a local company, as you know, we're a distributor of electronic components where we're part of the Berkshire Hathaway family of companies, so one of the most respected companies in the world. And we're happy to be here tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Chipman, I think at first really approached Mr. Scott Nelson, the department head of our science and technology department at the high school. I think Brendan's connection with Mr. Nelson through the football team and also your support of the football team helped create this connection in which Mrs. Chipman presented the opportunity to partner with Sager Electronics to bring robotics to Middleboro, which has been something that has really been on our minds and in our future plans, but is something that we've always just kept moving forward in years, just as other priorities have risen. But through the motivation of Sager Electronics and the connection that Mrs. Chipman had with the school department, we were able to start communicating via email back in the spring. We met one time, Mrs. Chipman, myself and two of our physics teachers, Mr. Peter Wilbur and Mr. Jed Stomace, to talk about the potential of robotics in Middleboro. We've actually had a robotics club for a couple of years now, but it's been a robotics club in which there are really no materials to support actually building robots and, and working with them. So through the, you know, the motivation of Sager and their wish to support a program, we were able to come together and start building a plan to move forward to bring robotics, not just as a club to Middleboro, but actually have it as part of our curriculum as a course offering in the future. So I'm, I'm truly excited by this opportunity. I think it's something great for our kids. It's going to certainly build motivation for some of our kids that want to work with their hands that just don't get that opportunity. And I think it's something that, I was speaking with someone earlier just about robotics. It's not just you, like the typical robot you think of from, you know, in, in movies and shows. Robotics are a part of everyday life. It's such a major part of industry that our students need that exposure to it within the public school setting that perhaps motivate them to want to pursue these STEM-based careers. I look at robotics not just as something that involves science, technology, engineering, and math. I think it also involves arts. It involves being creative and thinking about how can I design something that will help solve this problem? And it might not be from an engineering perspective, but it just takes that creativity and creativity is something that I think our curriculum can sometimes lose when we think of just the standards and what they say on the black and white paper. And we need to instill creativity and give our students that opportunity. And I think this partnership with Sager is something that is not just this one-time donation of, of money. When we met with Mr. Lynch, we talked about becoming true partners and having opportunities for our kids to experience the work that they have going on in their distribution center to hopefully folks from Sager coming and working with our kids and, and allowing our kids to make connection with people who are real engineers in real life that are working right here in the town of Middleboro. So I don't know if you want to add some more if I missed anything with that, by all means.
No, you did a great job. I'll just give you a little bit about what inspired our company, what's motivating our company to do it. Each year, we have a, our industry, our association has a executive conference and back in 2011, we invited Dean Kamen as the keynote speaker. So Dean Kamen runs a company called Decker Research in New Hampshire. He's unfortunately best known for the Segway, the, the two-wheel. I say unfortunately because here's a guy that, you know, all his inventions are geared towards people in need and easing suffering. And, you know, he's known for this device that really was an offshoot of, of a wheelchair that climbed stairs. So anyway, Dean Kamen came and we really didn't know what he was going to do, but he surprised us and told us about the FIRST program that he kicked off. And FIRST stands for, for inspiration and recognition, recognition of science and technology. And this is a robotics competition and that he has created and it is done throughout the country with local competition, then regional, then national. And it was interesting the way he spoke to us, you know, he said that our society celebrates sports and entertainment and we're all, you know, part of that, but it's a little bit, there's too much emphasis there. And he wanted to put together a program where the kids worked in, in certain week periods just as if it was a sport, football, basketball, they build the robotics, then they compete locally and then regionally and then ultimately nationally where they had a Super Bowl and the President of the United States attends and so on. And now it's turned into, you know, the, the most respected non-for-profit STEM program in the country. So he was there to really pitch the industry executives for money and for help and for free products for the kits that go into the, into these robotics. So there's companies like Intel and so on. And since 2011, our company and, and all of us in the association have searched for ways to, to contribute in our way, in our own way. So traditionally for us, the last few years, we've provided free products that go into the kits. We also sponsored a, a pre-high school team when we had a chance. So, so this year, Deb Chipman, as Dr. Gates described, suggested that we do some work right in our own backyard. So, so that's what, that's what's motivating us and we're happy to know that you're going to put a program in and we hope to see it flourish.
Thank you so much, all of you, for your partnership here. This is clearly an important area, a growth area. I work for Johnson &amp; Johnson and I can tell you that robotics is a strategic growth driver for us in the healthcare industry and I imagine in probably every other industry out there today where our students can engage in the future, college and career kind of courses and, and career. So this is, this is fantastic. I also want to recognize that there are three women sitting in front of me and I heard a recent statistic that actually the, the rate of women entering into STEM professions has actually declined since the year 2000 or 2011, which was devastating to hear as I was driving. I think I almost drove off the road. So just to see three women sitting here in front of us today engaged in the STEM profession, I'm just, I'm thrilled at your engagement. So thank you on behalf of the schools and our students. This is just, I look forward to seeing what's going to come of it and being part of it if, if you need it. Thank you.
Fantastic to us when businesses in our community help donate and help be part of it. I would also add that I would love you to come to our AP rally. It's an opportunity that we take for kids who are competing in AP, taking AP classes. We throw an all-out rally for them in September, much like you would for a football team or a basketball team and just to honor those kids who are stepping up to do something extra for our school. So we would love for you to come and be a part of that, too.
That connection, so that's great. Thank you.
Thank you again. And I know we have the presentation of the big check.
We do have a big check here, but the folks at Sager Electronics, in addition to sort of reaching out in a collaborative way to join together with us, have also made a financial contribution to the district of $5,000 to get this program started, get some equipment for these kids' hands and get this party started. So we thank Sager Electronics for their donation and would like to get some, maybe some pictures of you folks. And we have our photographer with us, Mr. Sean Siciliano. Thank you very much. Yeah. Mr. Brannigan? Thanks again, Deb. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mary Ellen, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks again, Mary Ellen. Appreciate it. Say hi to the kids. And to members of the committee, Deb Chipman's son is off to WPI to take up engineering. So, thanks again, Deb.
I would move that we, I would move that we accept this donation from Sager Electronics in the amount of $5,000 with esteemed gratitude.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Other than thank you again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item on our agenda is report from school committee members. Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, just one thing I want to bring up. My daughter, who's entering seventh grade, did sign up for the athletics conditioning program. And I must say, I'm very impressed by the program that they put on. We talked about last meeting. That's actually how I found out about it. And they have an hour and a half, five days a week for eight weeks. And I think it's $35. So it's a great, thank you to the athletics department for doing a great job.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to take a moment due to what has gone on in this country the past couple of weeks and to thank our first responders in the town of Middleborough for keeping us safe, the police, the fire, the EMTs, and everybody else involved, police all over the country, as we know. I think I've been taking a bad rap lately, and I want to thank them for all that they do for us, especially for our kids.
I would second that. And let's all take a deep breath for a change. I think we all could take a deep breath and take a step back. It'd be nice.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
The only thing I wanted to add was, I've had the opportunity since the last meeting to participate in two golf tournaments, one, the Mitchell Memorial Club Golf Tournament, and the second is the Lincoln Lynch Memorial Golf Tournament. And I mentioned both those because they provide an awful lot of scholarships for our kids, and I did want to recognize them. So, thank you. Moving on to the MEA report. Mr. Catino.
Good evening. I'm going to just add to the first responders, the gas and electric department, because on my street, there were multiple branches, trees, problems during the last storm that hit our town, to include a transformer. Three and a half hours it took them, all the power was back on. And then I was watching the news the day after, and there was an accident that had taken out a telephone pole. That was all that had happened. The accident occurred 11:30 at night in the town where it happened. Seven o'clock in the morning, they were still not finished restoring power. Our guys do a great job. So we'll throw them out there, too, because they go out in that kind of crazy weather, too. So, anyway. One thing I have, we've got one contract that was, we just, you voted on. We'll be signing them. I actually, I think I've already sent you that email. So you should have it with the document that you can just fix and then print out the correct copy. We have one more that, the negotiations are finished on. We have one more to go. I think you guys already have the proposal from our side. And hopefully, we can get them all done before the school year starts. That would be, that would be, yes, we are, but that would be my goal. Cafeteria contract went a lot faster than I had expected initially. So it actually was very good. So, anyway. Any questions? Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Superintendent Stevens. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd invite Dr. Gates down just for a moment. I'm going to introduce to you somebody who's going to be, he's not here this evening, but he's going to be in district during our, beginning of our professional development for the start of the school year. As you know, the school committee has dedicated a lot of budgetary money, and the town has donated, not donated, but the town has raised and appropriated monies through the capital planning, capital projects for technology. And it's initiative, it's an initiative in the district, and we're moving forward with that initiative. But that initiative also requires technology for students to have in hand, so all students can have it, not just some. Wireless internet throughout buildings, which is being worked on this summer. And, but that also, that piece of, that Ms. Franco brought up several meetings ago, so succinctly, but we have the, we have the what, we're going to buy the what, but how about the how? How are we going to actually take this technology and integrate it into the curriculum? And in the beginning of our school year, we're going to front-load some professional development, very specific to that how. We have some very significant folks coming in to talk to our teachers, educate our professionals about how to take this technology, which is going to be in the hands of all students, six through 12 individual units, and be able to integrate classrooms and technology. We have some very specific educators coming in to talk about how to work it in a science class, and how to work it in a high school English class, and how to do it at different classes. I've met with Jimmy Michael, who teaches Russian, and he's interested in looking at more technology for him. And that comes a long way. He's been around for a while, but he's interested in expanding his horizons there. But there's also some very specific things that we're doing in anticipation of that, to sort of kick this off. We have a keynote speaker coming in, and his name is Alan November. And I just want to read a little bit of his bio, if you excuse me reading it, but I couldn't memorize it. But it says, Alan November is recognized internationally as a leader in education technology. He began his career as an oceanography teacher and dorm counselor at Island Reform School for Boys in Boston Harbor. He's been the Director of an Alternative High School, Computer Coordinator, Technology Consultant, University Lecturer. As a practitioner, a designer, and an author, Alan has studied, had guided schools, government organizations, and industry leaders as they plan to improve quality with technology. His writing includes dozens of articles, bestselling books, empowering students with technology and web literacy for educators. Alan was co-founder of the Stanford Institute for Educational Leadership through technology, and is most proud of being selected as one of the original five National Kristen McCullough Educators. He has worked with educators in all 50 states, Europe, Canada, Australia, Central America, and Africa. Every summer, he hosts the Building Learning Communities Conference, an event devoted to the concept of connecting and empowering children to lead more of their own learning and to contribute to the learning community. Alan November will be here in district to kick off our Year of Technology, our Technology Initiative. All of the faculty through Professional Development Grant have been provided with his book, Who Owns the Learning. We've asked faculty to become familiar with this book. Can't require it, but I know a number of them have sent me pictures from sitting on the beach in Nantucket, reading the book, and having a good time. And hopefully, we'll have faculty members who are inspired to read it prior to his presentation, and perhaps maybe after his presentation, say, wow, that makes a lot of sense. So it's our intention to purposely integrate technology into subjects throughout. And Alan November will be that sort of kickoff author. And Dr. Gates knows a little bit more about him. So I'd ask her to be down here to maybe have a couple of comments and maybe respond to any questions the committee might have.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Alan November is truly a world-known quantity in education. He is extremely innovative, not just in the area of technology to support teaching and learning, but just in about his philosophies about how the classroom should function. And this book of Who Owns the Learning is, allows us to think about putting the student in the center of their learning. It's their learning. It's not the teacher holding all the knowledge to give it to the student. It's allowing the students to, as I said, have some creativity in being able to access content to increase their learning, as well as ways to be able to display their knowledge and engage in conversation amongst students. And that, to me, is really the heart of this book, and it uses technology as a tool to facilitate learning, to change, you know, a device from being a $400 pencil to really just being a tool that opens up the world to our students to gain insights into content, and again, be able to have various ways to create and display their knowledge. You know, Alan November here, you can see his Twitter page. He's pretty well-known. I think he's got almost as many followers as Mr. Brannigan with 43,000. He's just a world-known quantity. And for me, I think the best part about this is the philosophies that Alan November embodies align with our mission statement as a district, which is to prepare all students to excel as educated, responsible, global citizens. And I think this keynote will align very well with that mission statement, as well as our initiative with embedding technology to support teaching and learning.
Can you just remind us what the date is of Convocation Day? What date will he be speaking?
30th.
30th, yeah.
Welcome, the school committee, please, to please attend that kickoff event. It's going to be in the afternoon. It'll be noon time in the high school auditorium. So exciting new beginnings in technology. You know, we've identified it as an initiative in the district, and we are committed to making it work and to integrate this technology into every classroom every day. We're not, you know, our focus at the elementary level is balanced literacy initiative, and we're working on it, and there'll be some trickle down. But six through 12, with our models and our numbers that we have and what we're able to lease and buy, it looks like we're going to be able to put a device in every child's hands with the devices that we have. Six to 12. So, excited about that. So. And that's, that's that. So thank you, Dr. Gates. If anybody has any questions of myself or Dr. Gates anymore, or thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, with a device in each student's hands, Dr. Gates, you came to us three years ago with a thing called Digits. Are we looking at anything else that you can think of? And the reason why I say that is, the Digits program is such a powerful tool. It's just a book. It's a tool. And as someone who watched three years of it, it is so powerful that if we could continue it, it would be great, but just food for thought.
My mindset is to continue to enhance what we do in the classroom through technology. You know, I'd be lost without technology. There was a couple of times today, the internet went down when I was in the middle of work, and I was just like, okay, now what do I do with myself? I don't have access to sending this email that I was in the middle of or writing this document that I've been, I've been working on. But in terms of curriculum resources, for the STEM side of the house, we're certainly always looking at digital resources. We recently implemented our personal, financial literacy course at the high school. And the high school curriculum resources are still pretty traditional in that they do have hardbound textbooks, but they are more and more so being accompanied by online resources. And there's online components to help support that program. We do have discovery education as well that we use on the science side of the house with Science Tech Book, which is essentially, it's not just an online tech book, a textbook. There's so much more to it. But it's, it's just a very, very powerful tool, and it provides ways for students to have multiple ways to gain access to content, whether it's watching a video, reading a passage, and watching a video where someone is describing their thinking as they're solving a math problem. You don't get that when you open up your textbook and you're trying to plug through your math homework, you know? So it's just such a powerful tool for learning. We're really excited with this initiative that Mr. Lynch has brought forward, and we will just need to continue to enhance it with the curriculum resources that we bring onboard. But there's also a big movement with open educational resources. You may see it online, OER. There's more and more of that being pushed out, and that's the beauty of the internet. There is a lot that you can get for free, and there's a lot that's out there that's quality as well. Back when I was in the classroom over four years ago, probably it was more like eight years ago, I was using a resource called FET, which was online simulations that you can use. It's almost like an interactive lab that the kids can perform. And it was free. And there's plenty of those things that are out there, and our teachers are certainly searching for them and using them in the classroom. But now that we have more consistent access to technology, particularly at the high school, I think we're going to see some amazing things coming about in our classrooms. More amazing, I should say.
It also looks like Dr. Gates is prepared now for her RISE update, which is posted up on the screen. So, Dr. Gates.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to come back to you folks from June 9, when I presented, and you graciously supported the opportunity to send out that letter to local businesses to solicit for donations to support our RISE program. So following that June 9 meeting, I went right to central office that Friday and started creating the letters, signing each one individually, stuffing envelopes, putting labels on, and preparing the mailing. I'd like to thank our courier, Peter, who was able to take care of the mailing for me. In addition to sending out those letters between June 10 and 14, we were able to have an article in the Gazette. If you didn't see it, there's just a little snippet of it. Matt Ferrera was kind enough to put out a blurb in the Gazette to further acknowledge what we're trying to do with our new teacher orientation program. And I'm really proud of the support of the community that has come forth already. We have businesses that contacted me immediately following the school committee presentation. In some instances, they didn't even get their letter, and they were already contacting me. So I'm going to thank each of these businesses individually for those that have donated thus far. That would be Harry's Bar and Grill, the Burt Wood School of Performing Arts, Lenny's Autobody, Peaceful Meadows, TNC Nails and Spa, Discover Middleborough, which is the Middleborough Tourism Committee, Dave's Diner, Christmas Tree Shops, Judy Wicks from Jack Conway Real Estate, and Pro Cuts in Middleborough. These are the ones that I've actually received donations in hand from, and I have other, many other companies that have made commitments to donate. And actually, one came in the mail today from Pearson Education. They donated some soft-sided lunch bags to give to the teachers. I think one of the more exciting donations that came in was from Peaceful Meadows. They're not just doing a donation, but they're going to become part of our tour. As myself and Mr. Lynch board the bus with our new educators, one of our stops will be Peaceful Meadows, where they have offered a free item from their menu to each of the educators on the tour. So I thought that would be something nice on a, more than likely, a hot August day. But each of these companies has given in their own way to not just showcase their company, but to really show that they care about what we do in the Middleborough Public Schools and to, you know, show their appreciation. So I'd like to thank them and just share this quote, "Without a sense of caring, there can be no sense of community." And we certainly have both a sense of caring and sense of community in Middleborough. Also, just, I neglected to do this previously, but if any of the members of the school committee would like to attend RISE, you're welcome to join us. I have shared the agenda with you previously. If you need another copy of the agenda, please let me know. You're welcome to come in at any time. And, you know, it'd be nice for the new educators to see your face, because we are partners together in supporting our students in achieving success.
In the letter that you put in our packet, in the first paragraph, it says, "We are a community that come together, live together, and support one another for the betterment of ourselves, not individually, but collectively selves." I loved that. When I read that, I was like, oh, that's exactly it. And I think of all the community businesses that are locally. That is what we are. We are a community. And I just love that. So I wanted to make note, there's a couple of things, a couple of quotes. to make note. There's a couple of things, a couple of quotes, and I just was like, oh, that was perfect. I mean, we talk about this, because we're bringing educators, new hires into our district. They've never been here before, and what better way to welcome them? With an ice cream and a little tour. So, I think it's a wonderful program, wonderful program.
Thank you, Dr. Gates. Appreciate your work on this, and thank you to our community partners.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a driver's education update. Mrs. Pietelli?
Thank you. As you know, we have our in-house driving, driver's education program, and it's run by, we have one instructor who does both the classroom and the driving. And she became ill this spring, and she wasn't, and we don't have a second instructor. So, several students were left with partial classroom and driving hours to finish. Julie, she's our instructor, she made arrangements to finish the classes over the last two weeks of July. She did some five-hour classes last weekend, the week before. So, the kids who were in the middle of the session were able to finish up if they could make it. There were still some kids who need to finish it up. In the early spring, Mr. Lynch and I were speaking with the Martin Auto School in New Bedford to come in in the fall and run our program. So, we're in transition, and then I went out. So, when I came back, we continued those conversations. It's all in place. It's going to happen in the fall. They're going to come in. They'll run the program here. So, I reached out to them the other day when all of this kind of transpired with Julie, and I asked them if they would be able to help us out, finish out the kids' driving in the classrooms. And they agreed. And so, what they need from us is the permission from the registry, because you can't do anything. If you're in limbo, you have to get the registry's permission. So, Julie did go to the registry. She got that permission from them to make that transition to the new school. And we contacted all of the students who are missing, who have partial driving lessons, partial classroom lessons. And then we also had about 12 to 14 students who had paid for lessons and never was started. So, we refunded their money, but we also contacted them. We let them know that the Martin School would be contacting the partial driving lessons to schedule their appointments. The kids with the classroom lessons to make up, they'll be contacted in the fall by the school to be, if you're missing Module Five or Seven, they'll let them know when those are happening. And then the kids who paid, who didn't start the lessons, they can call them and make their own arrangements. All of those phone calls, all of those students were called by telephone over this past week. They also was followed up with a letter with our sincere apologies for all the inconvenience that this caused their parents. The letter went to the parents and guardians. And I'm sure there's more students that have to come here, but I think we caught the bulk of them. And so, I spoke to the drive-in school today. They've already started making arrangements. They've called students. Students have called them. So, it's in motion. And, again, we apologize to the community for the inconvenience. It was certainly something that was unforeseen, you know, the instructor getting sick, and we're moving forward. And if anyone out there is still in limbo or hasn't heard from us, please call our office, and we will move that through. I'm sure it will take a few more weeks to get everyone captured into where they need to be.
And just to add, now that we're going to a private vendor, the concern would be cost. And some of the costs are higher, but we currently are charging, as a district, $450, and we're going up to $500 with the new company.
Our whole program is actually $550. It's $100 for the classroom and $450 for the driving, and the new program is $500 for the whole program. So, and they've agreed to keep that for two years, for this upcoming year and for the next year. So, and they'll come to Middleborough. They'll do the classrooms at our high school. They'll make arrangements with the high school administration for the registration of the students and then for the scheduling, the actual classes. They'll coordinate that with the office. And then for the driving, they will come right here to either the high school or the student's house and do their driving here. So, they don't have to go to New Bedford. It'll all be right here.
And we'll also see if they inquire as to whether or not they want to buy a used driver ed car with two brakes, two brakes, two brake pedals, one on each side.
With respect to this, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong. You did an exhaustive search in trying to find someone to come in over a year ago to even do this. And at the time, you had no luck. Nobody wanted to do it. You started as local as you could. You sent out letters. You did exhaust everything, and that's the reason why we're fortunate to have Martin down in New Bedford coming up here and handling this for us and providing the service to our students at less cost. Thank you for doing this and handling this and handling this whole situation.
You're welcome. And thanks to them, too. I mean, I really appreciate they came in, and it's going to be a good thing. It's going to all turn out good.
And I'm not sure you guys can answer this question. Is there value in maybe putting out some type of announcement on our district webpage for, I don't know what the N is as far as numbers of students impacted, but maybe some contact information for the Martin School? Have you done that?
Yes, we can absolutely do that. Right now, there is a blanket notification that a new school will be contacting you. It doesn't have the name. And then, when the students do email Julie right now, because she's still finishing up the paperwork, she has an auto reply that, same thing. You will be, things are in motion. You're going to hear from someone real soon. So, she's...
Cover all the bases.
Yeah, no, we can actually take the flyer and put it up there and make it more noticeable.
And there were folks who were very upset about this, and we understand that, and we've tried to be responsive as quickly as we could to get things in place to sort of help out with individual situations. Because when you were sixteen and a half, or when I was seventeen, I'll tell you what, there was nothing more than I wanted was that license and that freedom, if you will. It's our mom and dad. But it's one of those things where there's been a slight delay in some of their programs, and we appreciate the folks' patience and apologize.
Will we be collecting a rent from this group when they're at the high school?
Renting, just like any other business. Win-win. So, if there are no more questions there, my next one up is the seventeen budget. So, I'm just about finished realigning the lines in the spreadsheet, and we'll put it in the Dropbox when it's finished. It is about forty-seven pages, so I would be happy to print it out for anyone who wants to stop by, pick it up. We're still making some adjustments. Now that the complete state budget is done, they did completely knock out the kindergarten grant, and we did have two ESPs. So, that's probably our biggest adjustment. We had two ESPs being paid out of the grant that we have to move back into the budget. So, that should be done early next week. So, if anyone wants to stop by, but I will put it in the Dropbox when it's done, and you will be able to vote your approval or not next month. Okay?
Summer maintenance.
One more. Summer maintenance projects. So, our maintenance department has been extremely busy. I have a list of projects right here. I'll go by school. So, the installation of the new boiler for the pool and the domestic hot water at Mary Good, that had to wait, that was paid for through an article, the pool boiler and the domestic hot water at Mary Good. The work started this past week. They kind of demolished all of the equipment, and they'll be replacing a new one. Mary K. Good also have removed and replaced the playground mound from outside the garden, and they're adding a drainage for the rain runoff. I guess there's no, when it rains, it just sits there in puddles, and so they're going to do a little underground work so that the rain doesn't sit there. Installation of an ADA ramp and replacing the existing plywood ramp out in the back where the bus drops off in the morning, there's a ramp. We had that removed, and we had a new ramp put in just the other day. HBB. So, now that we're going to have a technology teacher, they really didn't want them sharing space in the library because it's too condensed. So, because of the massive size of the cafeteria, we're able to build a room in the cafeteria that will house the HBB library. So, they'll move all of the books and tables and all the equipment down there. And they'll also make an office next to the cafet, where the ladies actually cook in the kitchen, right outside there, and that will be the food service office. Because as every summer, they're always moving people around, and they need more office space, they need more classroom space. People need to move here and there. So, the food service people will be moving in the small new office, and the library will be right inside the cafeteria. It will have walls and soundproof, and it'll be a regular classroom. There will be a young man installing a small outside garden as part of his Eagle Scout project at HBB. The mech roof, they started today with the scaffolding, and they should be actually Monday starting the construction of removing all of the tiles. Also, the new playground on the tennis courts was put in in June, and we're also adding an ADA ramp for that playground. So, that's quite a pitch. They have to do a lot of work there. School Street School, they have a ramp into their entrance, but we are adding railings. There's no railing, so we're adding the ADA railings on both sides. Also, we're installing new basement windows in that building. Through our rental agreement with the Reed's Collaborative, they pay their room rentals, but they also have set aside $10,000 every year for capital projects to that building, and the first $10,000 of the basement windows will be covered for that, for the 2016 capital project, and then the railing will be part of their seventeen capital project. So, that's a nice partnership we have with Reed's. We also have eight summer interns who are working with the custodian and maintenance staff. They're being directed by Jim Hutchinson. There is a need, if there's a custodian out there, work and move all the equipment out of the rooms so they can be stripped down. We have two stationed here to help with the summer program, because there's lots of activity, and that helps Garrett and his guys, so they're going to have to do the regular cleaning after the summer school's over.
Get some more painting done.
And, yep, so Garrett can get more painting done in his regular summer work. They're also going to be helping cleaning out the barn at the high school and the basement at School Street. So, they're, every day for them, they could be at a different place, except for the two stationed here for the summer program, but Jim's really moving them around so they can get a lot of work out of them, keep them busy, and they don't get bored. So, they're doing a great job.
And to be clear, the interns are kids from our district.
They are.
Recently graduated MHS grads or our current high school students, yes, who are not using any heavy equipment or should not be anyways.
That's it. That's all, folks.
Well, Mrs. Pietelli, it's nice to have Mrs. Pietelli back at the table, certainly. Thank you, and obviously, welcome back. She mentioned Jim Hutchinson in her last sentence there, and I want to let you know, as a committee, that Jim Hutchinson has agreed with Kathy and I sitting down with him to act as the facilities director for the 2016-2017 school year. He did it this year, sort of de facto, and we worked with him, and we weren't sure. He still wanted to be a maintenance guy and do it, and he's still going to do some maintenance, but he will be taking over the role of full-time facilities director. He'll also be serving on the MHS Building Committee as that facilities director, because we have an open space on that committee. There's a committee of sixteen currently, and it should be seventeen. So, he'll be sworn in, and he understands that that's going to go on. But significant savings to the district overall, but we both, Kathy and I, and I don't speak for Kathy, but both, we both enjoy working with him. He's a hard-working guy who's even-headed and has been able to handle all of the projects we have going on, and there's a lot going on, and this is just a partial list, and during the year, and bidding and specs. And he's just, he's a gentleman, and everyone that he works with closely raves about his interactions, and he's good with, he's also a good boss, and he's been an effective boss. So, we do appreciate that. So, that's the facilities director. Any questions on that?
Just to be clear for us in the community, is he acting, or is he our permanent...
He's the facilities director for this year, for the 2016-2017 school year. He is still, sort of, he still does, will do some maintenance as part of his plumbing license. And if a toilet clogs or something like that, he'll certainly be there. He's not going to say no. But according to him, even this year, as he transitioned, about seventy-five percent of his duties, he found, were in the facilities director position as opposed to. So, he'll still have that small percentage, and on a day, it might be fifty-fifty, and on the other day, it might be hundred-zero. So, but he'll continue to do some of those things. And he's, he never balks. He meets substitute custodians at five in the morning, and he puts flags up at sunset when custodians aren't on duty, and they just, he's just all of the above. He really has worked out really well. We're pleased with it. So, any other comments, any questions? Okay. I'm going to move on now. As you know, I have an entry plan going on. We have some findings for you in August. Part of that entry plan was an online survey that I did, and I've heard from a couple people, a couple parents and a couple of teachers saying, hey, remember that survey we did in March? Did you ever share the results of that? So, what I want to do is share those results with the committee this evening and let you know that it's part of a bigger picture, but I want to let you know how the 200 respondents are, so there are 194 respondents, but those respondents, how they felt about some of the questions and some of the information that we gathered, and I'll have some of the answers up on that, up on the survey, and you can, we can stop as we go along here. I have some sort of summaries of each sort of category and each question, and then at the end, I have some comments with regard to some similarities that came up with regard to responses. If you'll indulge me, this was the, sort of the summary of, people took a lot of time to write a lot of things, and obviously, we can't summarize all of those things in sort of a succinct manner, but however, what I'll do is sort of let you know what came from this in terms of some major categories that people were concerned with, and the ones that we've addressed through the budgeting and through the process of planning for next year, and the ones we might want to address in the future. But this is just part of the whole entry plan. I want folks to understand that, but I do want to report out on the online survey, and that's what this presentation is about. So, if you look up on the screen behind you, the larger screens will, and I'm going to try this, a new little gadget that I have courtesy of the AV department. Turn it on. I just got to turn it on.
Point it to the computer.
It worked before.
It did work before. We did take it for a test drive. Does it need to be just refurbished? Say that again.
There is a...
Oh! Boy, I don't like that. Sorry about that. Is it going to work for me?
All of me.
All right. Sean's going to be my remote. So, the first slide. What category, what category best describes you? The greatest majority of participation was from parents and guardians in the community, followed by teachers in the districts. Responses were also noted from students within the district, as well as members of the community, but the far, the greatest majority was definitely parents and guardians within the community. In terms of school representation, I'll tell you what I expected, then I'll tell you what the reality was. If you look at the chart, the large majority of respondents, in terms of parents, came from the John T. Nichols Junior Middle School. So, the overwhelming majority of respondents were the parents, guardians, teachers, and students from the John T. Nichols Junior Middle School. Secondly, the individuals representing the Middleborough High School community accounted for a significant portion of the survey responses, with the elementary schools registering with the least participation from parents, guardians, students, and teachers. The question, why is the success of our school system important to you? When respondents were asked to report why the success of the school system was important, over ninety-five percent of the responses indicated that the success of the school system is important to promote student achievement and foster the growth of productive citizens to build stronger community. Question is whether my child is challenged at school. And when asked whether or not respondents find their children in the school system to be challenged, more than half of the respondents indicated that they believe they are. And there were also some don't know and not applicable, so that the percentage actually goes up considerably when you take those percentages out. With regard to school safety, over half the participants in the survey indicated they believe the children in our school are safe while in the... believed the children in our school are safe while in the care of our personnel, and you also look at the number 36 students who don't know, people that don't know are not applicable, community members, so the percentages obviously go up a little bit higher when you talk about those people with students in school. The next question involved drugs and alcohol in the school system. Again, we have that 60 folks who didn't know or not applicable, but of those who answered, they feel that it's not a problem in the schools, although some folks think that there is a slight problem. If you look at the number, about 17 folks on the percentage-wise 8.9, it would be considerably lower than that when we take in the number. But this is just obviously not a scientific study. This is not a survey of students, or not a survey specifically looking for this information or calling this information out. With regard to appropriate discipline, over 90% of our respondents with knowledge in the area that discipline imposed on their children of our district was unfair. So 62 of the respondents said they either didn't know or the question was not applicable to them. With regard to teachers and students respecting one another at school and participates in the survey were asked, and the overwhelming majority suggested that there is mutual respect between teacher and student. Whether or not instruction is effective, my child is receiving effective instruction, nearly half of all respondents suggested they are in agreement with children within the school system receiving effective instruction. And obviously, we have that number on the bottom of folks that don't know is not applicable also. Access to technology. Folks feel strongly that the students can connect to the internet. As you know, we had the BYOD starting last year, which worked for some of the respondents. It was exciting part when we find out through the year that there was not a lot of usage with that BYOD program, and that's one of the reasons we moved on to a more universal technology initiative. With regard to the next staff, the question, those who elected to participate in the survey were asked to indicate what the district might, must be sure to maintain at all costs to preserve the educational climate. Responses were nearly identically spread across four categories consisting of core curriculum, facilities, free public information, including busing, in humanities, art, music, and phys ed. The respondents identified these fundamental components as essential to maintaining the academic integrity of our district. With regard to the strengths of the school system, respondents indicated that there are several strengths of our system that were distributed fairly evenly. Notable strengths of the school system are the support of our student body, leadership in each of our schools in the academic preparation that the district emphasizes. The next slide is the key issues from their perspective. Despite the exceptional strengths and assets of our school system, respondents were given the opportunity to identify the key issues facing the school, the public school system in Middleborough. The overwhelming majority of responses indicated that our school system's facilities create the greatest concern for the members of our community. In addition, respondents identified both funding and curriculum programming to be of equal and pressing concern for our school system. And the final slide with regard to the questions, when given an opportunity to identify the gravest area of need of improvement, the overwhelming majority again reported that our school system's facilities are in greatest need. A close second was the academic offerings across the district. Few respondents identified other or safety as an area requiring improvement. Now, there were some open response questions at the end, and what else would you like the superintendent to know? Are we headed in the right direction as a school system? And what does the school system need to work on? That is where we get the majority of the folks that entered information. I have a lot of the quotations from it, a lot of the information from it, but if you look at the next slide, I've identified the areas where there were most responses by folks in the community. One was leadership, concerns about the leadership shifts that have occurred in the district in the past few years, but also real sort of pride in the commitment that's been demonstrated recently with the folks that have come in and the people that have stayed and the people that want to continue to stay. So sort of concerns about the past, but hope for the future, and I think that was pretty much the summary of the leadership concerns. With regard to curriculum, there were some areas of concern, specific questions about curriculum at the elementary level, curriculum at the middle school level, high school level, all different areas, but there were different areas of concern. One was regard to the Balanced Literacy Initiative at the elementary school and the units of study, and concerns about whether or not we had a reading series and such, but those are some of the questions being addressed as part of the leadership, the curriculum initiative we have going on and the complex area, and I can go into more detail later with the fact that we just had 50 folks have a five-day program with Irene Fontis from Leslie University and Fontis with a great five-day curriculum session at the end of the school year, which worked out very well. A lot of the folks were concerned about technology. There was some concern about the BYOD program, that their child was unable to use more than one device, and there was a great deal of concern about the future of technology in the district. And once again, I think through the budgetary process and through the initiatives we've identified with technology, that I think we're gonna come a long way in that area for this year, but that was an area that was identified by folks. Some of the special achievement education, the achievement gap, I guess is the best way to say, the concerns from folks, that subgroup of special education students that we've identified time and time again through MCAS results and through data that we've received, that there is a real gap between the two and trying to close that gap and trying to work with our special education department in making things better. And again, once again, it's an initiative that we've put forth through the budget process, work moving forward with the new sort of model of special education administration that we have in place. And then the final is the facilities, mainly concerns with the high school. Folks noting that they were happy that certain things had taken place. They were happy about the HBB air quality issue. They were happy with the vote taken by the town with regard to the future of possibly addition renovation at the high school or a new facility at the high school, but concerns about facilities that their students are in or their children are in right now. So that was one of those general areas. There were also a lot of smaller areas that people had comments on, specific comments. There were a lot of parents with specific issues with specific people that, you know, not gonna note in general. There were specific issues. There were a lot of folks that had some issues with the 12 release days, which has been addressed. There were a number of comments about that. There were a number of comments about the excitement about the BYOD, and there were other comments about the frustration with the BYOD. So again, some of those things that we've addressed through the budgeting process, that we've addressed through the initiative process moving forward, you know, we can't change the entire district. The majority of folks in the community are happy with the school system. There are folks that aren't happy with the school system, and what we need to do, as I've mentioned before, as a school system, is try to identify those areas that we can improve in, and we've obviously identified a number for next year, and continue to develop a strategic plan through this entry plan survey and all the, my summary of the entry plan, and design the next strategic plan for our district, which will address many of these issues and some more with regard to how we improve our district and how we, as I've said from the very start from my very first interview, how we maximize student achievement in a safe, caring, and nurturing environment. And I think that is paramount, certainly. So that's sort of a summary, a quick summary of an online survey. A little bit disappointed that there were only 194 respondents. There's plenty of time. There was a lot of time to fill it out. It was advertised. It was, we talked about it at meetings, but it is something that I think I want to continue to do on an annual basis. I know I've asked the schools as part of their school improvement plans to do a survey with each of their parents, but I think it's important, and even to get more specific with some of these. And I need to, as part of this process, is to go back and to recalculate some of these numbers so they get a little bit more clarifying in terms of when you get into those don't-know and not-applicable. I want those folks to feel like they want to contribute to the survey, but I also don't, if they're gonna say that their child is receiving effective instruction, we need to take those folks out of the mix when we figure out the percentages. So that's just a simple mathematical thing that I can do. So, and again, I apologize for the year. Mrs. Piattelli watched me do the spell check, too.
Yeah.
Although you've only been superintendent for a year, if I look at the survey, 80% of the respondents were parents, and by my calculations, you've been a parent of a child in Middleborough schools for about 16 years now. Is there anything that surprised you out of what you received? I think that I was surprised by a couple things, I would say. One, I think with regard to leadership, I think people were really, really pleased with certain areas of leadership in our school district. I think people, you know, noted specifically that they were extremely happy with the way the high school has evolved and the way high schools, the programs available at the high school, and the program of studies and the AP programs, and they're very much looking forward to the high school. There were specific concerns with regard to the middle school that were noted. There were some positives and there was also some negatives with regard to curriculum programming, leadership, all of the above. And those are noted. There's definitely noted, but there's some of it too specific to mention, but in general, you know, the middle school age is a difficult age. There were some issues at the middle school this year with standards-based reporting and some things. So I think that came, that sort of spawned perhaps some of the responses, because that was at the height of the debate, as you recall, about mid-year, passed through mid-year, that there was some confusion about that sort of, that sort of program that was being started through the book that they were reading, and some of the folks had started to pilot it, and there was no real identified plan, which Mr. Gaggen has responded to in kind and has moved forward with a plan in that regard. So folks really happy at the elementary level, for the most folks, parents, with regard to the way things are going. I think the folks are happy with the new additions. I think people seem pleased without getting to specific personnel. People are pleased with the leadership at the elementary, pleased with the recent changes at the elementary level, and I think that's been good. So there were all the comments about, you know, leveling and the grouping of levels and how that happens with Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, and that's natural, too, because that's sometimes all that folks see out there is those sort of very public leveling that occurs and without the insight that's provided by the principals at meetings such as we have. So, but in terms of major surprises, I think, like I said, the general feeling is that things are going in the right direction, and I think that is, that's a good sense, and hopefully you have that same sense, too. I certainly do. So we're looking forward to continuing to improve things, no doubt about it. So.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thanks for the survey. This is a nice start to capturing this type of data. Be really interesting to see year over year how the results improve, change, even beginning of the year versus end of year would be a really neat snapshot, but we recognize this is a starting point, and we thank you for engaging in this way. I notice and kind of take some ownership for the fact that no business owners filled out this survey, so I feel like kind of we own some of that responsibility. I know we had a community engagement plan, the school committee did, to try to more strategically and meaningfully engage the community, and we clearly have some fantastic partners in our community, so maybe that's something we can give some thought to.
I agree with you, Mr. Chair, just a bit of a response to that is, I did notice that, and I purposely joined the Rotary to begin the process of communicating with these local businesses and engaging these local businesses, and I presented at the Rotary meeting, an introduction of myself and plans for the future. I also, Megan Quirk, the community resource person from our new community resource center, also presented at a Rotary meeting, because that's an important group of really active, engaged folks that run the Rotary Cable Auction, that are involved in our schools. They make donations to our schools. So in response to that, I did notice that, you know, and surprised? No, but I do think that we can improve that. There's no doubt about it.
Mr. Chair, I mean, again, just lots of learnings here. This is fantastic data as a jumping off point, so thank you for putting this out there to the community. Thank you.
I did want to add, too.
I did have a conversation with somebody about filling out the survey, who owns the business, and given what he had talked to me about, my assumption is he probably answered as a parent or guardian before business owners, so I would add that, too. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah. This is great, great information. I was interested to find out if there were comments in the elementary level about the leveling of students, because that's a subject that I myself have always just been torn with, that we don't level our students in mathematics and the STEM-type programs even at that level. And, you know, I understand differentiation in the classroom, and you should be able to do four or five different levels of math in the classroom, but I didn't know if that was an item that came up at all or, or more than once.
I would say that it probably did. There were concerns about students, differentiation of instruction and things such as that in these sort of heterogeneously mixed-group classrooms. There were some concerns about, you know, very specific concerns about special education programs and things such as that. So very specific concerns that I didn't sort of generalize. However, I can put this in your Dropbox so you guys, folks, can look at all of the specific comments. I'd be glad to do that. I can take care of that either tomorrow or Monday and get that in the Dropbox. So you can look through each of these, and some of these folks, like I said, some of these folks, as you can see, took the time to write, this is probably, you know, 250 words, and there are several like that, you know, and that's somebody that really took the time and to answer. So I think it would be, I think it's a great idea for you folks to go through these and take a look at them, and if something comes up and you say, well, there's an item that we probably need to address because I saw it three or four times, then we certainly can do that. So.
That's awesome. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a question on Slide 7 about the alcohol and drug use is not a problem. I just want to make sure I got my double negatives correct. It says that the majority of response was disagree. 31% said disagree. So they disagreed that drug and alcohol was not a problem. So does that mean the majority of the respondents feel that it is a problem?
That's, that's a great question, and the question may have been, probably maybe the question can be worded better.
So, but you think that they... I mean, that's my first question, was do you think they misunderstood the question or is this a real issue we should look at? And my second question was, can we break this out by school? Like, they identified themselves as high school or middle school, and one question, can you correlate that and actually break this out by school level?
Of the schools, we may be able to do that.
Because I'm guessing that the elementary school probably wouldn't be as high as the high school.
Right.
So if it's the majority here, if it's a really high percentage, let's say at the high school level, then maybe that's something, I mean, that might be, this was the one slide that kind of concerned me when I saw it, because wow, I, you know, I hope it's not a huge problem, but is there anything being done? And so my follow-up, is there anything being done right now to address that issue?
Actually, yes, Mr. Stevens. We have a new program called the S-BERT, which is the Screening Brief Intervention Response Treatment, which has been a law that's been signed through Governor Baker, and we've trained all our counselors and nurses already in the administration of it. It's not required until the 2017-2018 school year. That would be something, as I mentioned to the school committee prior, when we talked about this initially, that is, this is something that would be vetted through a school committee once it started. But the idea at the state level is to do two grades. We did apply for a pilot grant to allow for the training of all of our personnel, but this is an area where either 7th grade or entering 9th grade or both would go through a, just a short 10 to 15-minute screening, and the counselors and nurses would have sort of a red flag system where about 10%, sometimes there might be some questions about a second screening that might need to be done, and then, so all the students in the system at one point, and possibly two grades, will be screened for drug and alcohol use, and the response to treatment would be the piece that we'd have in place after that. So, but there is a plan in place to screen students, and that came from the House Rep, well, the Massachusetts government, and it was a law signed by, it was a response to the opioid, and some money for the opioid crisis, and that's where it came from. But it is, it's all-encompassing. It's drugs, alcohol, et cetera. So.
So that'd be like a, almost like a roadblock, like you're just checking kids on a certain day, just...
Through a toll booth, and if something comes up that is a red flag, then there's a further vetting through parents and, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Following up on this, there's always that perceived versus actual that I always worry about. Parents may perceive this is... about. Parents may perceive this is an issue, but what is the actual issue? And I think that this piece that you just talked about is going to bridge some of that gap for us, for us to know.
That would be much better information.
Right. And, and that's one of the big pieces that, I don't want parents to perceive something that isn't there.
Right.
And that's always the, the problem, because that leads to other things. But once we have real, hard data, we're going to know what's going on. And a little bit, a lot more, I think, but.
Agreed.
Because I, I always worry when I see, that's always that perceived versus actual. And I always get, you know, when we put numbers out to something, it, it sometimes drives you through the roof, because 30% of the parents that responded think that there's something wrong.
Agreed.
You know, because if the, if there's a perception out there that there's a problem, then, I mean, if there's not a problem, then if we can figure it out, you know, then it's better.
What if it is a problem?
If there is a problem, then we work on it, yeah.
Then we'll move on to MSBA update. Can you give a brief discussion about designer meetings?
Last Tuesday, Mrs. Piattelli, myself, and Rob DeRoges visited with the MSBA at 40 Broad Street in Boston. We were three members of a, it was supposed to be a 15-member committee, but ended up, there were two folks who were not there. So there were 13 folks there. The purpose of that meeting was to bring forward from Middleborough, our three finalists for the next stage, which be, which would be the interview of the designer, or the architect, for any possible renovation, addition of, of a high school or new construction. So, my, like I said, myself, Rob, and Kathy went in. We agreed on three firms. They were not necessarily in the same order. We had slight disagreements with regard to who we liked the best in terms of the group. So we brought those three forward. They included the AI3 Company, the Drummy Roseanne and Anderson Company, and the Mountain Vernon Group Company, all architects, architectural firms. So we sat, and the chairman went through a process where he summarized each of the proposals, as he does, it seems like, with every single meeting. That's sort of his job. And he went through exactly all the proposals. He had features of each. He had inside knowledge about which companies have more business, which companies have less business. And it was very clear to us that there was a company that, because of their limited people or their limited personnel in Massachusetts, they had just been given a 200-plus million-dollar project in Lowell, that that would not be considered by them on, on that day for us, and happened to not be one of our finalists. But we went through the process. We had our three finalists. They listened to us attentively. They went around their, their board, and they each had comments about each of them. And then, I wouldn't say in a rare move, they basically voted, we voted through a process where we assigned points, three points to our number one, two points to our number two, one point to our number three. They, each of those folks did the same thing. And then we did sort of a chart collection, a total tally. And it came out to our three recommended designer firms and a fourth. They also brought in Doran Whittier, which is a fourth firm, that we did not have on our radar initially. But then again, that's not to say they're not going to come in on next Tuesday and blow us away, because we now, for the second part of this, is to go in next Tuesday, the same three, and to sit with the same board and listen to the interview process. And we actually had a chance to see the end, the very end of the last interview process, because they had a, the process we're going to go through with Tuesday, they were doing last Tuesday with Lowell. And they had finished the final interviews, and then they went through their vote. So we were able to see the voting portion of it. So, we will go in and we will listen to interviews. We've, I'll have all the questions prepared. All the questions are done through the, through the MSBA. And they vet it through us, and they say, is there anything else you want to add? And we worked with Compass Project Management. And we came up with a couple of additions, Middleborough-specific. And then we threw that back at them. So those questions will be asked of those four firms. They'll come in with their, their presentation. And then we'll go through a vote, similar to what we, I just described, with a three, two, one, and who we liked the best. And as far as I know, I don't think we'll be able to conference. I think it's, it's, we'll just be individual members of the board at that point. No, we're not going to whisper. So, we'll just go through the process. And then, hopefully by noon time next Tuesday, the 26th, we will have a designer on board. And then, well, we'll have a designer recommendation. And then we'll go through the negotiations process. And then we have a MHS Building Committee meeting on next Wednesday. And hopefully, we'll be able to introduce the designer for the next step, the next very important step in our process, which is basically designing an adrenno, designing a, a possibly new high school, and designing, determining which site would be the best, et cetera. So, as you know, if you watch the papers at all, Stoughton, I think, originally had 14, or 15, or 16, or something, original ideas on how to go forward. So this designer will come forward with a bunch, they will go through the smaller committee, go through the larger committee. And it, the process goes on. But we're that much closer to an addition renovation or, or proposed addition renovation or proposed new high school in Middleborough. So it's, it's rather exciting. And clearly, MSBA folks are sort of excited for us. They're, they're a group of people that are in the industry. But it's, I think it's, they're happy to see us. And they listened to us attentively, and they valued our input. And we made points to them that they were requesting. And, anything else, Mrs. Piattelli?
No, I will just add that, yes, it was very exciting, but it was also very scary. As I, you know, speaking in public's not my favorite thing to do. And at the meeting, like Brian said, there were 13 people around the table, similar to this, with the screen. But then there were 50 seats behind them with all of the designers and the architects sitting there taking notes, because they're up for the job. So they wanted to see how it went. So it was, it's intimidating. But it was exciting, the same. It is good.
But they were asking for our comments. And, and one of the things that I talked about a little bit, were a couple of the firms that I really liked a lot, were firms that had done work in this area, in the Tauntons, and the Carvers, and the Brocktons, and, and the, the towns right around us. So they're familiar with southeastern Mass, I think, which was a piece of this. Just a piece that I looked at in terms of, and their project study, there was a section of each, that was section number 10, that was their, it was called Understanding the Project. The three I chose, and I, Kath had this, Kath, yeah, the same three. But they clearly had a real, they had done their homework. And they were very familiar, at least on paper, with the Middleborough community, Middleborough High School, and the program that, and the community and the culture that Paul has at the high school, really in tune with that culture, a couple of them, which was, which was really exciting. So. And if you know that Drummy Roseanne was the, the company that designed this, there was an architect from that company that went out on his own, and that became AI3, AI3, which is one of the second of the four finalists. So we have some folks that are familiar with the, the Middleborough area. There's no doubt about it. So.
And just a couple of important things for the committee. It is our hope that contractually, the architect is on board by the end of July. If that's the case, then the architect will be here in our August or a September meeting. But more importantly than that, for the community, September 14th, which is a Wednesday, will be the first open forum at the high school in which the community will actively engage in what they want for a new or renovated high school. So it's a very big step. Kathy secured that it will go out in every Middleborough mailbox through the G and E bill. Well, obviously, we're going to have flyers at crazy days. And we're going to continue to drumbeat it and mention it over and over again.
We did send the message to the messenger, which is the gas and electric newsletter that goes out. So, we sent them the blurb, and they told us it would be in there. So, that will be one way. But also, the crazy days will be another way. And we'll get the word out at open houses at the school, and hopefully pack the house and listen to what people, listen to people's opinion, because that's part of this, an important part of this process. And I would, I would say that that will be a, a question and a condition upon the hiring of one of these, one of these designers, is, is their process for engaging the public, and the town of Middleborough specifically, in what we're looking for. And that's engaging the folks that perhaps don't want anything done, the folks that want just a renovation of the current high school, perhaps, of folks that want an addition renovation, or folks that want a new high school. So, all of that will be, will be part of the process. So.
The second piece on the MSBA update is the MECC. And as the superintendent said, they're scaffolding going up this, today. That'll start Monday. Very exciting.
One of the points that was made today, Mr. Chair, was, was that the, the, they were originally going to do the work on the slates with booms, and they were going to extend booms. But they then decided they wanted to go with a, sort of a scaffolding, so that they can do the slate the same time a second crew is doing the rubber roof, so that they can expedite the process and get it done, obviously, in a, in a quicker fashion. So, that's their plan. That's why they're putting up the staging. And obviously, the area will be off limits to anyone. So we appreciate the public's sort of participation in this whole process, that they respect the, the area and, and not, I know it's going to be an area of curiosity, but it will be off limits to the public. Thank you.
Any other questions?
The school committee, subcommittee was put on by mistake. So ignore that. We'll move to action items, school improvement revisions.
Motion approved, Mr. Chair. The John T. Nichols Junior Middle School Improvement Plan, that is revised?
I have not received a copy of that revised plan. So, I'm not sure if I missed something. But I typically like to review something before I approve. So maybe we can table this one until, yeah, please. Thank you.
I didn't. So we'll table it for the time being.
There's a motion on the table, though. Do we have to?
Would you draw my motion? Thank you.
We'll table it till at least the next meeting. The next item on the agenda we did, which is memorandum agreement. Third item is overnight field trip to New York City.
I move that we, we approve the request by the music department for the overnight field trip, March 30th, 2017, through April 2nd, 2017, to New York City.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. This is the annual trip that the music department takes. Last year, they went to Canada.
Year before, I think, was Washington DC, correct, Paul? So they tried to rotate it through, so each high school child in their, each high school young adult, in their four years, gets a different experience.
Also participate in a concert, and a, and a contest also.
Yeah, and very reasonably priced. And I, speaking as the parent of a banned child or banned children, they absolutely look forward to this trip. It's, it's a highlight of the year.
Any further discussion?
Seeing none. Any audience have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Family Resource Center requests for donations.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we, we allow the Family Resource Center Coordinator to solicit donations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I thank Megan Quirk for coming forth and, and seeking out these donations from BJ's Wholesale Club, which I think is great.
Any further discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And the last is approval warrants.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we approve warrants numbered 506, 518, 519, 530, and 542, as presented this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Any correspondence? Yes.
Received an email yesterday, I believe, but I think we all got it from Margaret Corey, W. And I responded to, she was requesting information about community engagement. In particular, I responded about social media and the social media community, committee, subcommittee.
And I'll send you a note about this piece tomorrow. I apologize.
Thank you.
Any further comments on correspondence?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I had a resident ask me about the online links to the school committee meetings. This person had indicated that they had disappeared. So I told her that I would ask about that. I'm not sure. I haven't gone on to look myself if those are disappeared or relocated, or perhaps this person has made a mistake. I just wanted to ask the question. On the, is it MCAM or MET? Where they're normally, you can go on there and click the link to the, on the internet to watch the meeting. It's a link to the videos of the meetings. I don't know. I'm not familiar with technology. But the person had indicated they routinely watch them. I don't know if you have...
We have our AV person, Mr. Siciliano.
Oh, come, come tell us, come tell us. So they, we have an answer for the public, please.
That way the public can hear.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
For those of you folks who don't know, this is Sean Siciliano.
Welcome, Sean. Thank you.
For now, and they're in the transitional period to be moved to a new site. So they should be up, hopefully, beginning of the year.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Anything else for correspondence? Then you'll have to wait a minute until my Dropbox opens. Yes.
I, I would move that we go into executive session for procedure number two, to conduct strategy session, strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically, non-union contracts, there's several that we have, as well as for procedure three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may be, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair declares, and this is for our union contracts, only to return to public session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Hearing none. It's a roll call. Well, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Lambert, Mr. Gillis.
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Thank you.